So thank you for those people that have muted yourselves. If you could stay on mute just for the moment, that would be great. And I'd like to welcome councillors and of course, members of the public to this Ramsgate Town Council meeting on the 1st of March 2021. Happy St David's Day to all of you. And again, I'm councillor Anne-Marie Nixey and I'm the Chair of Ramsgate Town Council. So first item on the agenda, we've got apologies. We've almost got a full house here. I do have apologies from councillor Ara. And so I'm assuming there aren't any others because we're, we're all in, aren't we? Yeah, okay. Second item on the agenda is declaration of interests. And I, there are two matters in tonight's meeting, Thornhill Allotments and Algarve Gardens. I have a declaration of interest for the first part of this meeting. So I will be handing the chair over soon to councillor Green. Is there anybody else that's got a declaration of interest on either matter, please? No, I take that as silent. Thank you very much.
Chair, could you just check those numbers again, please? This is councillor Piper. If we have apologies from councillor Ara and obviously the late Peter Campbell isn't here.
Yes, that's 14.
That cannot be more than 14. There's only 16 pounds on the books.
We actually have two Pat Mackinsons. I can't access the chat because I'm only a guest. There's two Pats logged on. If you look at the list on the side.
Thank you.
Okay. Super. So before we go on to the first matter, we've got the minutes to verify. So we've got the minutes of the 3rd of February and the 24th of February. Anybody want to put their initials to any of those?
Chair, this is councillor Huxley. I was at the 3rd of February meeting, but my name's not on the list on the minutes. So could I be added, please?
Absolutely. Thank you councillor Huxley. I'll make sure of that. Thank you.
With that correction, I propose acceptance, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And is anybody seconding that proposal?
I'll second that, Chair, councillor Alvin.
Thank you. And the meeting on the 24th of February. Do you have a proposer and a seconder?
Yeah, I'll propose that, Chair, councillor Alvin.
Brilliant, and I'll second. Thank you councillor Heatherington. Okay. That takes us straight into the first matter then on the agenda, which is the Thornhill Allotments. And this is where I hand over to councillor Green. Thank you very much for that. I'll put myself on mute and he will take it from here. Thank you.
I think formally we have to elect temperature.
Ah, I did wonder that, but I was told from the other meeting, we could just go on as normal as we had done last time. But I'm happy to do that if that's what people want. If you want to elect a chair, do I have a person putting themselves forward for chair?
Chair, I propose councillor Green to be, to be chair.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Thank you. Any objections?
Could I have the seconder, please?
Yes, it's councillor Heatherington.
All right.
Well, no objections councillor Green. The floor is yours. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I think formally we're accepting the recommendation of the Financial and General Purposes Committee, which was to go ahead with the purchase. But they can't make a decision at the last meeting. So formally, we, we have to debate their recommendation. You've had a report from the town clerk that came to some conclusions on the back page of that report. So I wondered if we started off by Richard going through those conclusions. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Right. Okay, Chairman.
Excuse me, can I just bring forward a point of order, Chair? Councillor Green has just said that the Finance and General Purposes Committee recommended that this goes forward again, well, in fact, at that meeting, it was dismissed. The Finance and General Purposes threw this out and they did not recommend it to council. So what Green has just said is incorrect. Thank you.
You're, you're quite right councillor Piper. It was my mistake. I was reading from a different, a different seat. The recommendation was not to go ahead. If I could correct myself.
Right.
Go ahead, Richard.
Right, the F and GP committee made its decision on the basis of evaluation. Since that time, the value we looked at the valuation, as new information has come to, come to, uh, come forward.
I'm sorry Chairman, I must interrupt.
No, no, hang on. No, sorry.
This is the point of order. You've just said something which is not true.
No, hang on. I'm sorry, sorry Chairman.
You have to stop now before you continue.
I'm sorry.
You've just said something that isn't true.
No, that's not true.
You cannot proceed with a presentation which is based on an untruth. You can't do that.
Richard, I will hear the point of order. Councillor Piper, make your point of order.
I'm sorry Chairman, the point of order is on a statement which is fundamentally untrue. The Finance and General Purposes Committee did not base its decision on a land valuation. There was a discussion of several other issues as well, including, for example, it being out of the Ramsgate catchment area, including, for example, the cost of the whole project, when there might possibly be other things that that money could be spent on. So I genuinely believe it is not true to say we made our decision not to go ahead based on a valuation. That was a small part of the discussion. And that would be my point of order Chairman. It's not true. Thank you.
I, I think individual councillors made their decision on lots of issues. I think you're quite correct councillor Piper. Richard, can you continue with your report?
Yes, that's got a point of order Chairman anyway. But one of the major parts of the reason why that decision was made was because of the valuation. The valuation was, did not take into account the fact that there had been land transactions done in the last, in the last five years, one of which was a piece of land very near to hand. And the price for that land worked out of 15,000 pounds an acre. There was another transaction, some distance away, which was a poorer quality land. And that was done at 10,000 pounds an acre. The valuer took the lower valuation as being the valuation for the land. Even though there were, had been land near, near to the site where there had been, where there had been, which was nearer to, to the piece of land that we're, we're considering tonight. Now that is true. The, at the last discussion, there was a, I'm sorry, at the F and GP committee. Yes, it was mentioned that there could be other projects that might go ahead. But nobody at that meeting made any, made any suggestion of what these projects were. They made no understanding at all of it. And, and, but the major part of why that, why that decision was made was purely on the, was mainly because.
Richard, Richard, could I stop you there? Could you stick to the conclusions of your report, please? The report you submitted to us all, which has six conclusions.
The conclusion is, one is that we have a statutory duty to provide allotments. Two, that there is a 245 person waiting list. Three, that we can afford it. We have more than sufficient resources in the accounts already. Even if we, even if we don't borrow any money to buy the land and to probably equip it. And four, this would not stop other, other, um, projects going ahead, which we still have enough. And six, we have no borrowings at all. So therefore, at 2% per year, or less than 2% per year, that works out about 17,000 pounds per year. We lose in valuation, because we've got 1.2 million in the, in, in the kitty at the moment. We lose in value already, 24,000 per year in the value of the, uh, in the valuation of the, of the balances, simply through inflation. Now, I was asked, we did initially ask the chairman at the time, councillor Campbell, did ask that we find out exactly whether tenants would be prepared, or potential tenants would be prepared to, to move to the site. And we, of the 245 people that were asked, um, 239 were contacted. Unfortunately, six don't have an email address. Of those, 142 responded. Seventy-one of them said, no, they wanted to stick to a particular plot or a particular site that we already have. But 59 said they would go. Another 12 were maybe. Now, looking before we'd even just gave to them, uh, whether we, where the site was or anything else. Simply the fact is 59 of those people were prepared, now that is quite a substantial number, that are prepared to take a plot amongst anywhere. So I think in terms of demand, um, we can, there already is, we've already done that, that piece of work. We did that on the initial, before we even started. Okay. I've done you some question and answers. I'm quite happy to answer those things. What I'm not prepared to do, that permanently is to be told I'm a liar. I don't like that. And I don't think it's right. Thank you.
I think that's my fault, Chair. Richard, right, um, do we, could I ask councillors? Do they all feel they're, they're in possession of all the facts they need to make a decision? Or would they like to ask questions?
I have two.
I've got two hands up. Pat and.
Which Pat?
Pat Mackinson.
I don't know where mine is.
Pat Mackinson, could you, could you ask your question?
Hi. Sorry, I thought I had my hand up from the beginning because I'm getting terrible, terrible echo. I'm thinking, am I the only one for this problem?
No, you're not. No.
No, you're not on your own. It's councillor Lynda Piper.
This is councillor Wing here. Pat, you've got two. You've logged on twice. I suggest you shut down.
Councillor Moore has logged on. And I've raised my hand.
We've got two Pat Mackinsons logged on.
I've had my hand up since the beginning because I'm, I've got this problem with hearing what anyone's saying.
I think, Pat, you've got, you're logged on twice, which is creating the feedback. So you, you, we've actually got two Pat Mackinsons, which I tried to say earlier on. You probably need to log out and log back in.
Becky, Becky, there are two PMs. Not one, two. Pat Mackinson and Pat Moore.
There's, there's two Pat Mackinsons and one Pat Moore. I can clearly see it in the right hand on my list. Get your list up. There's two Pat Mackinsons and that is creating the feedback. There's two.
Right, I think, I think I've logged out. It's all right for me now. Thank you. I don't know how that happened. Okay, I'm mute now.
Right, could I speak then, David?
Yes, Pat, Pat Moore, can you please speak now?
Thank you. I don't think this is a level playing field. Because we've got the town clerk who has written 10 questions and written 10 answers. Where are the questions we want to ask and the answers we want?
If you want to ask, if you want to ask a question, ask it now.
Yeah, there's lots of questions I'd like.
Well, ask one.
Well, one of them was when Richard was talking about money. He said you can borrow money at 2.3 or 5% over 50 years. It's on the paperwork. At 16,000 a year. In 50 years that they'll take this over, it will be costing double, 800,000. Not 400, which is the figure that was put up for borrowing. I mean, can we leave this to people coming behind us? Can we leave people in Ramsgate with this big debt? I don't think.
Well, can I ask that for you councillor Moore? One is, is that all councils borrow money. Secondly, it's on a fixed interest, not a, not a growing interest. So it won't increase in value. And like anything else, when you buy a house, for instance, you take a mortgage on it and that's all we're doing. Also, if you take 2% as being the average increase in value of the land. Now, it's been a lot more. This year it's gone up 8%. But overall, I've worked it out, um, that works out to about 600,000. The land will be worth 600,000 in, in, in 50 years' time. It should have been a straightforward 2%. Now, life's not like that. Some, some years the land values will go sky high, other times they'll drop. And they may even stay central, but.
What's that got to do with it, please?
Well, it's interesting all the time.
Could you, Richard, I think you've answered the question, which was, will the loan will be on fixed interest?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm letting Pat in again, Pat Mackinson. Does anybody else wish to ask a question?
Oh. Well, I've got my hand up, councillor Green. It's councillor Crittenden here.
Go ahead.
Um, I do have, like councillor Moore, I do actually have a few questions and my apologies. I wasn't actually at the previous meeting when this was discussed more fully. But can I just check, how many full plots will that piece of land take? And I, I do know that a number of people undertake partial plots, or I believe they used to, I don't know if that's still true. Uh, but how many full plots will that piece of land take? And I was also wanted to ask Richard if he would repeat those figures. I got a little bit muddled up. There were so many figures about who had replied and who had said this and who had said that. So I just wanted to repeat that. And I do have another question that will follow that. I just hand those to you over first.
Councillor, if, if we, if we lose, if we use all the land for plots, it would take 200.
200, thank you. And so I've got 59, would you be willing to go out now?
Uh, 59 of them.
Yeah.
Richard, Richard. Oh dear. Richard, I don't think we know that. All we know is that 59 are willing to move, to accept any of the existing allotments.
Yes.
That's correct, isn't it?
Councillor Green, this is councillor Lynda Piper. Can I speak at some stage again, please?
Yes, you can, you can ask a question now.
Sorry.
Lynda, you can ask a question now.
Thank you councillor Green. I don't think the take up of 51 people is sufficient to make this a growing concern. And one, the question that I would like to put forward is, is it possible for us to put this discussion on hold until we can meet in the council chambers, where we can have a display of the costs? We can look at the land together and we can discuss it face to face, instead of trying to do it in this form, because just on this form, it creates its difficulties, being heard. And Richard given us so much information that we have to actually remember it. I don't think we can make a fully informed decision on such an important issue, discussing it in this form. And I don't think that there's a great rush to get this through. So I'd like to ask, can we postpone this discussion until we're back in chambers, where we can look at a presentation slides and properly set out figures on how much this is going to cost and the benefits it is going to give to the people who want it. Which, for my opinion, it isn't worth doing because it will not enhance the lives of enough people of Ramsgate, given the huge amount of money that's at stake here. So my question again is, can we postpone this discussion until we can do it in a more productive setting? Thank you.
I, I, I have some sympathy with that councillor Piper. In fact, I have a number of questions of my own that I don't, that I think we need an answer to, which I will run through now. Loans, I want, I would like the town clerk to obtain in writing, um, in some form of where we can get the loan from and what the terms would be.
Sorry Chairman, I, I can't understand what you're asking. The terms are pre-hold and, and the prices, and he's already said the price. But I really understand what you're asking me to do.
But Richard, I don't think you've actually approached anybody and asked whether we can get a loan and what the terms would be.
Well, there's, there's no point in me doing it until we know that we're going to. I, I can't go to the Public Works Loan Board with something that you haven't agreed to. If you don't agree to anything, then I can't, you know, I, I, I mean, the earliest we can probably meet will be May, at the earliest I would have thought. By that time, the, the land will be sold and that's the end of it. Now, we've.
Richard, 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 listen, you're, you're asking us to make a decision, which would, which would involve a loan. And we, we don't know whether we can get a loan of that magnitude and what terms that we could get it on.
The terms, the terms are at the Public Works Loan Board, can they be published?
Please, let me finish. I would like some assurance that, that we can do that. Now, now I'm told that the, the owner of the land is quite willing to give us the money to, to obtain the answers to the, to the questions that I want answered. And that is one of them.
Well, the Public Works Loan Board publishes its, publishes its terms online. And you can look at them yourself. They're there. That's the terms that we will get them on.
Okay, well.
What they want to know from us is whether we're able to repay the loan.
I don't, Richard, I don't want every councillor to be asked to look up the terms of the loan. So, so could you bring it back to a future meeting so that we can all see what the terms are?
Well, Chairman, I, I can't decide whether the vendor is prepared to wait that long. Because we don't know how long that time would be, when it would be, and having yet another meeting to, to, to throw those terms.
It's one of the.
I, I find this is not ideal, but it's just.
Richard, it's one of a number of questions.
Yeah.
Second question. We have not been able to investigate whether, because, because this allotment will take a while to develop. One of the things that could save us money is if we can rent some of the land to local farmers. We have not been able to investigate that fully yet. So that's the second thing. Richard, please don't, Richard, don't interrupt me.
You're asking questions, I know.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking you questions. I'm posing, I'm just posing things that I believe we need to find out. And that's the second thing. The third thing is, we have not been able to properly consult our existing allotment waiting list to see whether they would be willing to take up allotments on this land. Within a month, we can do that. Next thing is, we have not been able to, to investigate possible funding resources to help us purchase and develop the allotment. Within a month, we could do that.
What sources, Chairman?
Sorry?
What sources?
Well, there could be external, there could be external funding.
Well, I find that most unlikely, Chairman, because it's a statutory duty. They won't do it.
Like through the lottery?
No, sorry, I, I can ask, but it's a statutory duty. Yeah.
The lottery does give funding for allotments. It's just a matter of arranging the.
Not to parish councils, they don't.
Well, it may not be, it may not have to be to the parish council. It could be through some other body that we set up. We could also investigate whether there is the support through crowdfunding to develop an allotment.
Chairman.
And we have not been able to investigate whether there is a local group of enthusiasts that could help us develop this allotment once we'd purchased the land. Now, they are, they are the things that I would like to know before we make a decision of, of this magnitude. I, I'm, I'm told generously, the owner of the land is willing to give us enough dollars to do that. So.
Well, he hasn't told me that.
So I'm going to propose to the, to the council here that that is in fact what we do. And I'm making that as a proposal and looking for a seconder.
I'm sorry councillor Green, can you just keep your phone on? I, my speaker is here, but I didn't raise a proposal. I've only got to come back into the meeting. Councillor Crittenden here.
I've got terrible reception. I didn't hear what you, what you said.
I've got really bad reception on this call and my call dropped and I did not hear the proposal you made, only you concluding that you were making a proposal. And I hope you repeat the proposal, please. Thank you.
The proposal was a number of outstanding things that I think the council needs to know before we make a decision. One was whether in fact we could get a loan from the Public Loans Board and what the terms would be. The second thing was, I think I'm just going to. We need to investigate whether there are local farmers that would, that would rent the land from us if we can't develop it all at once. Next one was, we need to consult with our existing, existing allotment waiting list to see how many.
I can't hear your words just now.
Who said that? The existing allotment waiting list to see how many of them would be willing to take up a plot on this site. The next one was that we need to investigate possible other funding resource, sources, including whether we could use crowdfunding, but also whether if we set up another body. whether if we set up another body that, that could attract things like lottery funding, whether that's the way forward. And finally, we need to test whether there is a group that would take some of the burden of developing this allotment off the council staff. I'm sorry about the reception. Did everybody hear the things that I think we need to find out before we make a decision?
Chairman, I'd like to second your proposal, but could I ask for a slight addition to it? In seconding it, and I think it's been indicated by people's poor reception when we are desperately trying to talk about this sensibly and therefore refer back to councillor Linda Piper's request that whilst we find out all the information that you're looking for and any other things that occur to us that we can email either yourself or the town clerk about and that we don't make a final decision on this proposed project until we can sit in a room and talk properly with correct receptions and so on. So I would like to second your proposal, would like to ask for that, that small addition, although it could be a very,
The problem with that Stuart is that we, we don't know how long that will be. And I don't think we can really ask the owner of the land to wait forever. So that's why I was sitting a month. Because I think that's how long he's willing to wait.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I did hear your answers. I, I'm personally myself, I'm not desperately convinced that the owner is only going to wait a month. We haven't had the outcome of the airport situation yet. And if the airport does get the go-ahead, it may well mean there are far fewer uses for that land if you've got airport, aircraft taking off and zooming over it at great speed and great noise, as it were, not that I think they will. But I, I think, I think realistically, no, I don't mean that the, the airport won't happen. I just mean the type of aircraft that people seem to be frightened about. I, I think there is little evidence that there are queues and queues of people trying to buy this land. My, my greater worries are when we come round to making this decision is being able to discuss it properly and look at just how many Ramsgate people are going to benefit from this money. And whether or not there are indeed other projects. I mean, you, Mr. Chairman, you brought up the matter of the bank moving out and we're going to try and stop them. It is unlikely we will succeed. One bank will then be followed by another. Maybe we could put money into a building where we work together with the banks so that all the banks share one building. It, it's something we could look at to investigate, to help more people in Ramsgate. So that's really why I think I would join with Linda and say we, we need to actually be in a room talking about this. And if we miss that plot of that, we'll admit it, there'll be another one.
I think the quality of electronic meetings is is another issue that perhaps we should, we should look at. Zoom, Zoom seems to work better than this, than this package. That's a separate, that's a separate issue Stuart. Yeah.
Chairman, sorry.
We, we have a proposal, it's been seconded. Can people speak to the proposal?
Yeah, Chairman, I've had my hand, I've had my hand on the screen up for about 15 minutes now. And I'd, and I'd like to speak.
Yeah, please go ahead.
That's okay, because sometimes you can't see everybody and I didn't have big screen.
I can't see everybody.
You know, this, this situation is getting more and more complicated. And I, I mean, personally, I mean, you know, let's, let's deal with the elephant in the room here, you know, I'm, I'm just totally against this. And I have been since the start. And the reason I'm totally against it is because it's out of, it's out of Ramsgate area. Although technically not that far away, but it's still outside of what most people would consider to be Ramsgate. We have wards within, within our area which Ramsgate Town Council touches very rarely. And I think the money that we're looking to spend on this could be spent so much better within, within the area than having an allotment. I, I have been trying to help Richard recently with the two allotments that Thannick District, that Ramsgate Town Council looks after and has done for the last 10 years to ensure that they come over formally to Ramsgate Town Council, which will then increase Ramsgate Town Council's allotment sites because these two belong to Thannick District Council. So on that basis here, and, and I'm not sure, well, to be quite honest, I am sure that the Ramsgate Town residents will not thank Ramsgate Town, Town Council for borrowing a load of money to create an allotment outside of the boundary of Ramsgate for very few people, when we could spend this money if we borrow it for a lot of people. Thank you Chair.
Tony, you have your hand up. Can't hear you Tony, you're muted.
How about that?
That's better.
Right. This is all very well, in my view, but it's total obfuscation. This is a fantastic opportunity to buy land. You buy the land, you own the land. Where else can you? Nowhere. There's nowhere invested land around here. Provide allotments is a statutory duty. Also, the provision that we've got up there, as I see it, that we can make a big impact on what the place looks like up there. At the moment, all it is is bare arable land. It's an eyesore. We could plant all sorts of things around the perimeter, make it look a great place. Now, what has to do with cost? We're looking now towards getting a negative interest rate. And that's a distinct possibility. So all the, all the money that Ramsgate Council has will be placed at negative, negative interest rate. So it'll actually cost you money to have the money in a bank. I think we need to come to some sort of decision a bit quicker than what's actually been proposed. This is an opportunity that won't arise again. I cannot see it ever arise again. I see that everyone here has their own view on it and their, and their own particular agenda on it and their own political view on it. But from my point of view, it's a thing that should be pursued at speed. Thank you.
Jane, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I've been up for quite a while too. I mean, I totally agree with what Tony's had to say. I'm wholeheartedly for this proposal. I think it addresses our green agenda in the form of the allotments and the much needed tree planting. I mean, I hadn't realised frankly how pressing the allotment issue was and that we have statutory obligation to provide allotments. And this could provide, you know, substantial number of allotments for the people that are waiting for them. And to say that it's out of the town, I mean, the way Ramsgate is expanding, it's pretty soon going to be part of the town. And most people travel to their allotments from what I've seen anyway. You're shaking your head Stuart, but most people do, okay? And I believe there could be a lot of, we could fundraise, some of these allotments could be used for projects like Garden Gate, which is a very successful mental health project. And by providing these allotments, we're providing actually families with means, families, poor families in this area with places where they can grow their vegetables, places where they can go and get, go and be out in the country basically. And the reduction of the price of the land makes this proposal even more attractive. And also I rather like the vendor's commitment to the environment. So I mean, as far as I can see, you know, we can't leave this for too long. It's a win-win situation for us to acquire this land. Very disappointing.
Thank you. You have your hand up.
Oh, yes, thank you Chair. I mean, I generally support this. I do think there are issues with, with discussing this electronically because it is, you know, we are talking about a large sum of money, but I would vote in favour of buying this land. I don't think, I think it's an opportunity that we, that we shouldn't miss. Because of my day work, I know there are opportunities and we've already got established Ramsgate Town team that were very successfully getting us the application for the Ramsgate Town Fund. I know that we're disappointed with some of the way the money is going, but the initial people started with Ramsgate Town team. So we know we have the expertise and the body to bind funding. I would certainly like to see the setting up of a forest school or Ramsgate Forest School. And I already have two providers that I work with that would be prepared to work in that forest school with some of our disaffected young people. And what they need is they actually need taken out of Ramsgate to do something. And some of those young people can be involved in actually building some of the structures that are there. That already happens in various parts of the country. I think this is, if we, if we think outside the box, this could be a very unique opportunity. One of the things I'd like to see is a setting up of a working body that would include key people within, within the community and I would happily be on that. I work with somebody who, who, who managed to get the three years of funding for the forest school in Margate. So there are funds out there. And the one thing that stops us getting funds as a parish council is TDC because everything has to go through them. If we are owners of our own bits of land, we can access funding. It's out there, it's waiting for people in Thannick to apply for it. And at this present moment in time, TDC holds a lot of that up. So I'm in favour of this, but I do get the point of of Linda Piper that this is not a good situation for us to be discussing this. We need really some sort of face-to-face meeting, I, I think.
Is anybody else got their hand up? No, I can't see anybody else with their hand up.
Councillor Linda Piper again.
Yes, councillor. Linda, yes. You're muted, Linda. Linda, you're muted.
Good.
Linda, you're muted. I'm sorry Linda, but you're muted. Linda, we can't hear you.
No.
That's better.
Sorry Chair, I'll start again. I've just had a phone call from Barbara Young, who can't, has tried to access this meeting. She did well at the beginning and now she can't. So whatever vote we take, Barbara is now excluded because she's not in this meeting, which just backs up what I said before. This is not the right format to have this very important discussion. It should be in the chamber where we have paperwork in front of us that we can refer to, to make an informed decision. Thank you.
Graham. You have your hand up. Sorry, George, you have your hand up.
That's too,
George.
Delay. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to agree with your, with your point about making a delay at this time and getting information. Also, agree with Linda. But yeah, we can get around to it and do it. And I also agree with Stuart. I don't think.
He's just making my point.
Thank you. Helen, you have, you have your hand up.
Yes, I've just got back in, it's taken me about 10 minutes. I've, I feel like I've missed most of the meeting. I just heard what councillor Linda Piper was saying. I've managed to make so little sense of this meeting so far that I would not be in a position to make any meaningful decision if there is a vote that is held. I did have one question that I wanted to raise at the beginning. I've got no idea if it's come up. But at the last meeting that we did have on this matter, there was an allusion from the town clerk that sounded very much like land banking. And it was something that concerned me because I didn't think that that was within the ethos of the the principles of the person selling the land. And I would like that clarified. Possibly not even in this meeting because the signal's so bad. I just don't know. Anyway, that was, that was the other issue I wanted to raise earlier.
Okay. Is it, is it? Some people have their hands up, but I, I think they've spoken. And I can't see everybody. But we have a proposal, which is that we delay a month to get certain questions answered and then come back to it again. If we're still in this situation where the, the electronics is not satisfactory, we'll have to try to deal with that. Or as Linda has said, delay again until we have a, until we can meet in person. So I'm going to put the proposal of delaying a month to get questions answered to the council. Is there anybody that's against that? Speak now. Anybody against? I'm going to assume then that everybody is in favour of that. Thank you. And now, hand to hand.
Is it possible for us to have paper copies of this information, please?
Certainly.
Send us paper copies.
I will be asking the town clerk to turn answers to those questions and supply each councillor with, with a copy of the answers.
Thank you.
I now need to hand back to Anne-Marie, but I can't see her on the list.
David, can I?
Are you there Anne-Marie?
I'm here, I'm here.
Right, I'm handing it back to you.
Sorry, councillor Heatherington wanted to say something, sorry.
No, I just want to say that, I mean, why are we using this format? Because Zoom is a lot better than this. I don't have problems with Zoom meetings, which I do day in, day out. And yet this meeting is always appalling, the sound quality. I really think we need to review what we're using.
I assume Anne-Marie will be talking to the town clerk about that.
Yes, thank you so much councillor Green. I'm not sure I want you to hand it back, quite honestly. Anyway, let's, let's look at the other matter on the agenda, which is the Albion Garden matter that we have outstanding at the moment. And on that, I'd like to hand over to the town clerk so that he can just outline what that's about. Thank you.
Yes Chairman, I don't even know where to start here. As you know, the history of this is that back in December 2018, at a meeting of Thannick District Council's cabinet, they announced that they were going to transfer the, the site to Ramsgate Town Council. In 2019, we had a number of meetings with Thannick District Council and we agreed in principle to do so. There was a meeting of the town council, four meetings of the town council, and they decided, yes, in principle, they would go ahead with it. The problem was the fact that all of a sudden estates at Thannick District Council said, well, if you do that, then there will have to be an estates fee and a, and the cost of our legal fees. We argued just that actually that wasn't fair and right, bearing in mind this wasn't an asset, but in fact a, Um, we argued just that actually that wasn't fair and right, bearing in mind this wasn't an asset, but in fact a liability and that we were actually doing them a favour taking the site over, but they weren't having it. Um, the council, this council made the decision that it wouldn't take Albion Gardens from Thannick District Council on that basis. So I have been negotiating with Thannick District Council to try, one, to find out how much these estate fees are, two, to find out how much the legal fees might like, might be. And in that, I've been assisted by councillor Orban and councillor Orban will probably back this up if, if he's still here. What it's come down to is the estate fee would be the minimum, which is six hundred pounds. And the, uh, the legal fees would also be sixty, six hundred pounds. Uh, and my understanding that would be twelve hundred pounds. There is a further problem in the sense that historic England and in their wisdom gave, thinking that we would be the recipients, uh, gave twenty five thousand pounds towards the repairs of the Philomite, which has never had repairs, uh, probably since before uh, reorganisation in seventy four. There have been various, um, surveys done and the latest was done only, it's still slightly incomplete. The, the conclusions haven't come out yet. Um, and they gave twenty five thousand for any repairs that needed doing. So on that basis, I've said I would put it to this council that we should pay twelve hundred quid, the six hundred pound estate fees and TDC six hundred pound, um, legal fees. But we'd also want the twenty five thousand pounds paid into our account because we would be the owners of the site and therefore responsible for these repairs. Um, I said I would ask you, the council, whether you'd be prepared to do that. Now, I do understand if this council says no and TDC can carry, take it back or retain it. Um, I, I, I have an open mind to it, but I'm giving you the absolute full details there. That's, that's where we are at the moment. Now, I think it might be useful for you to ask councillor Orban, if he's there, um, to confirm that because he, he interceded with estates as well as, as a cabinet member from TDC.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Orban does have his hand up as well. So councillor Orban, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I got involved.